The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council meeting. Let the record show that all members of the City Council are present this evening. Copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the meeting room and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. First item is item A, approve agenda as submitted. B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. D, approval of minutes of regular meeting on December 20th, 2021, as on file in the City Clerk's office. E, approval of treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $1,482,029.72. F, approval of Bozoa report of claims in the amount of $75,761.10. G, refer the claim of Bill and Gina Armstrong regarding damages to their personal property to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. H, refer claim of Madison Diggs regarding damages to her personal property to the city attorney and city insurance carrier for review and disposition. I, approval of change order number 005, an increase in the amount of $21,413. And pay request number 18 in the amount of $638,063.71 to Hampton Construction for the new fire station project. J, approval of certificate of substantial completion for the city of Beatrice fire station dated October 22nd, 2021. K, resolution number 6827, appointing Hannah Bell as deputy city treasurer and Amanda Coolman as deputy city clerk. L, resolution number 6828, authorizing signatories on behalf of the city. M, resolution number 6829, appointing trustees of the various city of Beatrice employee retirement plans. N, resolution number 6830, executing the certificate of compliance to the Nebraska Department of Transportation regarding all roadway snow removal and/or surface maintenance. O, resolution number 6831, appointing Rodney Aiden to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. E, resolution number 6832, appointing Alan Fetty to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. And Q, resolution number 6833, appointing Mike Honie to the Beatrice Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any item that a City Council member wants removed from the consent agenda? Mr. Clayborne?
I move that the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and are ratified as presented.
Seconded by Clayborne, seconded by Morgan, that all items listed under the consent agenda be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved, eight zero. We have no public hearings or bids this evening, resolutions or ordinances. Brings us to item number six, public forum. Purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the City Council for discussion and consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the Council at this time. Anyone here for the public forum? All right, seeing none, we'll go right into discussions and reports, and we're going to further discuss food trucks and some of the possibilities of guidelines that we're going to actually set forth. Tobias, you want to start it off?
Sure. So about a month ago or so, we brought out a proposed food truck ordinance for this body to kind of discuss. We wanted a few things. You guys had some changes you wanted made in it. What you have before you is a red line copy showing that we've made some of those changes. We're going to go over a couple of those, and then we have some other items we need some policy discussion on to see what direction you guys want to head. The first thing I'm going to turn you to is page five of the ordinance for section 13-76. We had talked about last time having the annual permits come to the City Council for approval, and that's where we have it drafted. If they're looking for a weekly permit, it would be handled administratively. So we did make that change based upon the last meeting. You'll also note on that same page, we did remove, as part of the application process with regards to the conviction of a felony, we have removed that item from the ordinance. Then I turn you back to the first page of the ordinance. You see that we added section 13-38. This is the current city code that we have out there. It states that if you're going to sell goods on city property, you have to go get City Council approval. Well, obviously, if we just discussed if they're going to do a weekly permit, it can be handled administratively. We amended this section that says if you're going to sell goods on city property, you have to come back and get City Council approval unless it's approved somewhere else in the city code, i.e. the weekly permits that we just mentioned that would be approved administratively. So that's why we added section 13-38 to the proposed ordinance.
Comments from the Council?
Then I would direct you to page seven of the ordinance. This is section 13-82. We had some discussion last time. We just need to have some clarity on the distance between a mobile food vendor and a permanent food establishment. If you guys, we had discussion last time with 50 feet or 100 feet, which way you ultimately want to go on that particular number. We did go and look at a couple of locations. So if you're at where the Amigo truck sets up, it does work 100 feet from KFC. It does work 100 feet from McDonald's. You can put that food truck there. So 100 feet would work in that area. The other location we looked at was down at the brewery. They're 100 feet away from any other food establishment today. The only place you would end up having an issue is if that building that is located to the west of the brewery across the street would become a permanent food establishment, that would be within 100 feet of essentially the front door of the brewery. Now, at that point, we'd have the conversation of who was there first and all those types of things, right? But that gives you idea about where 100 feet is. So kind of locations that people think about, those are ones where 100 feet would work. We just need to know if you guys want to be before 50 or 100 feet on that particular number.
So the property that you talked about, Ramigos, I think that's still owned by Rife.
Correct.
Okay. So if I'm Rife and I have seven different food trucks come in for a Saturday afternoon, I can't put anything on the north side of my lot because it's within 100 feet of KFC's door?
If you go with 100 feet, that would be correct.
Okay. I mean, that seems we're on private property. I'm selling tacos, not chicken.
That's why I bring to you and ask you that question.
Well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because it seems that, you know, we're trying to regulate stuff that's happening on public, on private land now. And to some degree, you can do that, but on this one here, I don't see how you can regulate what business is going to sell within so many feet of a doorway of a permanently established business, which probably won't be permanently established because most of them go out of business anyway. So you got a permanent structure, not a permanent business.
Any other comments?
Well, that's just on that one. I got several more.
What's the most common?
Get in there.
I will be before it's over.
What's most common in other communities is 50 foot, kind of what you see?
Yeah, well, we looked at other ones. I think 50 foot was pretty common, what we saw at other places.
And a lot of them don't even regulate that distance too, so.
I looked at zero to 100 was basically what I seen as well. I did quite a bit of research on it. Go ahead.
You keep rolling.
I asked a while back when we had this first discussion about the vehicle that sits at Fourth and Ella, and you said it was not a mobile food truck because it doesn't have an engine, which makes it inoperable.
No, under your definition, the way it's drafted today would not qualify as a mobile food unit because it is not independent with regards to water and sewer. It is plumbed into the building.
Okay. So, but it is, we would agree it's a truck.
I believe, yeah, I would argue that point.
We'd agree that it's inoperable.
Wouldn't argue that point. As far as I know, it's inoperable. I have not seen it move.
Which by my notes falls under our junk motor vehicle because it no longer moves. So I'm assuming that in order for them to do business, they filed all the exemption paperwork under 16-626, stop rate?
That's honestly, that's a truck we've been trying to figure out how to handle it. Because again, if it's in the building, we know how to, we know what rules will apply, and that's one we've been sitting around trying to figure exactly how to handle it.
First of all, I'm all for the food trucks. I'm just trying to make sure we're being fair to everybody that's going to come to town. Because it seems to be a hot topic issue wherever we go. I looked at the permits. As I said, I did a lot of research. There's several places that have not only weekly and monthly, yearly, but daily permits as well. I know there's towns within 35 miles of us that you can go get a daily permit for 10 bucks. You know, there's different variations of what the prices are depending on where you go, which obviously we'll discuss later.
What if they move from site to site on that daily permit?
It depends on what they're regulated to within the ordinances within the city. You know, some places have an actual map that they've put up together that this is where you can legally sell from on our property with your permit, or you went to private property, so.
I just wondered if they got a $10 one day, because I have no idea what you're talking about with the ordinance. I hadn't read that. But I just wondered if you got a 10, if you got a one day permit, if you could move, you know, if it was a little slow here, if you could move it to someplace else in the same town without getting another permit, I, you know, hopscotch it a little bit.
Depends on how we do up the ordinance, but I would assume that it's going to be a permit for a static location.
Yep, I would think so too.
What is defined as a special event?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Defined as a special event.
I believe we talk about special events. It's things in here such as Rib Fest, Oktoberfest, those types of activities.
So is that like a once a year deal? I'm just looking at the, if I look at a special event and I walk into the brewery, for instance, and they have trivia night on Wednesdays, that's a special event?
So no, the thought there was more along, again, a one, one time a year event, Homestead Days.
And then just an estimate of what you think how long this will take to in order to get the approved permit?
Obviously, those that come to City Council, you got to hit the right calendar days to make it, which means you're going to have to have it in by no later than probably noon on the Friday before council meeting if it's an administrative one. I don't see why we can't process that in a matter of a day.
So if we come up with something more like the city clerk, who we trust with a lot of stuff, could make a decision on
Absolutely.
Temporary 17 day permit that would cover through any city council meeting.
I would like, I would rather see it administratively.
I don't think that, I mean, alcohol, I understand coming to the city council, but tacos and chicken, I don't really understand that, to be honest with you. I think that pretty much wipes out what we're going to do here, except for I see no reason for the, you didn't bring up on page eight, I didn't bring my readers, with the recyclable stuff, because I haven't been into any location lately that has a recyclable receptacles, including McDonald's, Dairy Queen, Tapajones, and KFC, which I have visited in the last two weeks.
Well, that was another one of our items. We talked about last time. We need further clarification of, did we want to have recycling units or did we not?
It's there for redaction. Then I'd also propose that we do exactly what some of the other communities have done and put it together, designate a map on where we want you to put your vehicles that's not on public property that we're authorizing you to on city properties. Just so that they have it. This is where you go, boom. And then, if any of the police officers are running around town and they say, oh, this place isn't really supposed to be there, so let's go see what's going on, so.
We could probably put some map together, have designated city areas.
I think that'd be good. That's all I got for now, but I'm sure I'll come up with something else.
Rick, did you have something?
Jim's up here, so.
Okay, I was just going to wait until, if the council had any questions first, okay?
Well, we had talked about one time about if there was competing businesses within that 50 feet or 100 feet, that the two parties could work that out if their permission from the other competing business. Did we not talk about that at one time?
We did, yes.
Is that something that the council would like to include in this?
Certainly could.
Because if there's no, if there's nothing from the computing, the competing business that, we certainly wouldn't want to deny them from locating within a certain 50 feet or 100 feet, whatever we decide on.
I disagree.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too. They might complement each other, who knows?
Yeah. Anybody else on this side of the table? Mr. Nelson?
I'm going to start out with, why is this even being?
Your name and address.
James Nelson, 1025 North Sixth Street, Suite 2, Beatrice, Nebraska.
Thanks, James.
First question, why is this being considered? Is it a public safety issue? That's a question you all need to answer. If it's a public safety, we're going to protect the public from people that sell food that might get food poisoning, then why doesn't it apply to every single restaurant in the city of Beatrice? And if it's public safety and it doesn't apply to every food establishment, then I would submit to you that it's not really public safety that you're involved in. Which gets me to the next one, is the real purpose is to raise revenue for the operational budget of the city of Beatrice. You already have two sources of revenue from food trucks, sales tax and personal property tax, other than the vehicle that is not legally registered, doesn't have a trailer tag on it, doesn't have an operable license on it, to my knowledge. And again, I've eaten there too, good food, but be consistent. So if it's not public safety, which I would submit to you, you'd have a real tough argument saying this is public safety, then the whole purpose of this ordinance is to raise revenue. And why are you going to raise revenue on one small minute portion of the food industry in Beatrice? And I think that's a question that each of you need to answer for the public before you consider this ordinance. As we're going through the changes to the ordinance, on page one, does that include all swap meats and flea markets?
That need permission from the council to sell goods on city property? Is that your question?
On private property, because this proposed ordinance applies to private property.
That's another item for discussion here that we need to have.
On page two, your definition of mobile food vending units, that includes the food vending machines on private property. So I'm an employer. I have a food vending machine for my employees. It's on private property. I got to have a permit under this ordinance. That, to me, is just totally ridiculous. Does it include the popcorn stand? On page three, you make, and here's where I'm going, exceptions, because the rules are made for exceptions. Why don't you apply them straight across the board? If you're concerned about public safety and food poisoning, go back in time, where's food poisoning occur? And I'll pick on Facebook. You see that almost weekly. Somebody complains about a fast food restaurant and I got sick, which I think is a bunch of malarkey anyway, but where's your complaints coming from if it's public safety? How about the farmer's market? Each vendor going to have to have a permit too?
No, they're exempt in there if you read through it.
That's what I'm saying. That's the exemption. Why are they exempt if it's public safety? So your exceptions are, go back to the second question. If it's to raise revenue, how come you just don't apply it straight across the board? What's so special about the farmer's market? What's so special about Rib Fest? What's so special about the vendors at the swap meat and flea market at Homestead Days? For Mr. Frayland, why are you regulating what an individual owner can do on their private property if it might be zoned appropriately? Do you charge a fee for a restaurant to be open in this town? If not, why not? Be consistent. As you're further going through this, what's the current problem that you're trying to Is there a problem? If not, then we go back to number two. It's strictly to raise revenue. The recyclable thing. Be consistent. Go to page eight. Who determines what loud music is? Who determines what loud and excessive noise from a generator might be? Bottom line is, it's a matter of which neighbor complains. Some of you are old enough, Gary, you remember back when we had liquor licenses that you could not obtain unless you were buying a liquor establishment out. By having a rule that you cannot have a food truck within a certain distance of a restaurant is doing exactly that same thing. Unless, of course, you get the restaurant's permission to be that close on public property or even on private property next door. And I think we all know what's going to occur, is that restaurant wants a piece of the action for the mobile food truck. So which business are we protecting? The existing restaurants? Or are we trying to encourage new business in food trucks? Last but not least is your liability. If you're concerned about public safety and let's make sure everybody that sells food in this town has a liability policy required of all restaurants. Oh, and by the way, include the city as an additional insured on my private property. That seems to me rather ridiculous. You're going to make them sign an indemnification agreement? Indemnifying the city from what? On activity on my private property or on a business private property? Now, I certainly understand that you want to try and restrict the food trucks in making sure they don't park in the handicap parking stalls. My guess is that already is included in your ordinances, and you don't need that language in there. And maybe you need to make sure that people aren't in the middle of the street standing in line. But again, where's that problem been? On your fee schedule, and I'm going to be crudely tactless, look at your fee schedule from surrounding or other communities. Why do you think Lexington is the highest annual fee and the highest 30 day fee? Why do you think Norfolk is the second highest? Don't discriminate. Oh, I have.
Jim, are you representing somebody or are you just being argumentative? Just a question. You asked questions of us. I'm asking questions of you.
Represent Jeremy Snyder.
Okay.
And you all know I don't live in the city limits.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up.
So I don't get to vote on any of you, but I also have a business in this community.
Yep.
And I get to pay some of your taxes. I get the privilege of paying some of your taxes. I just don't, be consistent. Ted, that's my whole thing. Be consistent. And why are you considering that?
I just wanted to know where you were coming from. I'm considering because it was on the agenda. I don't set the agenda, so.
Toby.
Oh, yeah.
Question.
Yep.
My folks had a cafe, and I haven't been involved with restaurants in many, many years. But didn't the state used to have, or maybe they still do, someone who comes around every quarter and checks the cleanliness and the, and the, I can't, it was an inspector. I can't remember what it was.
A health inspector.
Health inspector, there you go.
The food trucks are regulated.
Are the food trucks, that's what I was going to ask. Are the food trucks?
And we have to pay, we have to pay a fee to have a license in the state of Nebraska, so.
First of all, ma'am, could you give us your name and?
Wendy Jurgens.
Thanks, Wendy.
I actually own a food truck with my husband. There's a couple of things.
And your address, Wendy, I'm sorry.
14594 South 25th Road, Pickrell, Nebraska.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, when my folks, they used to have to have a plaque from the state.
Yep.
Are those attached to your trucks?
And that's one of the biggest problems I have with this, is we are regulated by the state. And I think I sent all of you all an email, and it's actually moving through the state, and it has been talked about to where each city can't regulate this. Otherwise, you're going to have food trucks that are having to have background checks here, background checks there. You're having to have this done here. You have to do it different here. You have to pay this fee here. And we pay a fee to the state of Nebraska for what we do. And outside of Douglas County, Hall County, and Lancaster County, Lancaster County is within eight miles of Lincoln. They're only trying to regulate Lincoln. Do you have to pay a separate fee? Those are the only counties that your license, you have to go to them and get a separate thing at. And I'll piggyback off of the gentleman that was just up here. I have to ask why? Like, what happened that this conversation is coming about? Because from my point of view, it's been a good thing for the city of Beatrice. Like Stone Hollow, I will point them out. They're a good business. They pay their taxes and they bring extra people into their business by having these guys down there. It's never got rowdy. People are so nice. It brings extra revenue into the city of Beatrice. The other problem inside that is the liability insurance. We have to carry a liability insurance. I have a million dollar rider over my business, but I don't understand why I have to put that in the city of Beatrice's name. And I think the way that it came about is Carney actually was the ones that came out and said, if you're on city property, you have to have a separate insurance policy put into the city's name. That I understand. But trying to nickel and dime a business, and I'll be point blank with you guys, I don't hardly make anything off of ours. Ours is for getting out and meeting the people. We have some workers, and a lot of the money goes back to our workers. We make money off of the catering portion of it. But as far as the actual food truck, there's a lot of days that people don't even make any money at all at a food truck. It's just getting your name out and you get to meet people and different things like that. I'll end it with, I think there is way too much regulation in what you guys are trying to do, and it's not very clear because I'm reading it and I don't understand it. Because one person can do something different than another person can do. Or, for example, the restaurants and different things, they have different regulations than we do, but we have to go through the same processes as a restaurant has to go through. So why is it different? But that's all I have, and I just hope that you guys really look at this and read it and feel the burden that's going to be put on, on people, and it's undue. I think it's undue.
Well, that's the reason we're having this meeting, for the discussion. We're not being adversarial about this whatsoever.
But the way that.
Nobody, just a moment, please. None of us around this table are opposed to food trucks, okay? So I think there's the misconception that we're trying to stop them. We're trying to impose strict regulations, that it's going to keep them out. That's, nothing could be further from the truth. So that's why we're having this discussion. We started it a couple of weeks ago, and we're continuing it on tonight. And we're going around the room. If people decide that, the council decides they don't want to have anything, any regulations whatsoever, that's what we'll decide.
But I mean, ask yourself if it's an undue burden. Like, if you're treating somebody else different than somebody else.
We don't want to treat anybody else differently than anybody else, Wendy.
Yep, yep. And that's all I ask for is like, we have to go through the proper channels through the state to do what we do, and this is just another avenue of trying to.
I get it. I get it.
Yeah. So that, that's all I ask.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Comments, anybody? Gary?
I didn't realize until tonight that there are so few communities regulated this other than.
than basically the large ones. I'm not sure now that I would want to jump in on this right now, maybe down the road sometime. But I just don't know if I would want to support ordinance right now. And the second thing, I'd ask Jeremy or somebody up here, maybe. He offered to help with some of this stuff. Has he done... Have you contacted him, or has he contacted you?
He stopped by the office today. I returned a phone call to him, and his line was not answered, and I couldn't leave a message. So we have not been able to make contact.
Okay.
Jeremy Snyder, 22959 South First Road. Boy, has somebody kicked their hornet's nest. So to define a food truck, it's a temporary food truck with your guy down at Seventh, what is it? Sixth, yes. Fourth? Fourth and...
Eller.
Right. I mean, literally, you could just have that guy put a hitch on the front and transfer it into a trailer, which is acceptable by the state for a temporary food truck. Simplicity. We're all tied to water and disposal water, if it's gray water. I mean, that doesn't... We're a temporary food service, so we've got to be able to unhook and just go and move around, so. Him hooked up to utilities shouldn't be a thing, I mean, as far as looking at something like that, but... Anyway, to permit... So I've been on a little challenge of my own because of this, to go to Marysville, IndyCot, Fairberry, and Malko over in DeWitt. So basically, they... I go to Marysville, ten o'clock in the morning. Front page is all my information. Second page is my criminal stuff that I want to give them before they do my background check, which costs twenty-five dollars. And by two-thirty in the afternoon, they call me, and they say, you've been accepted, you're good to go. You just come back here. Every time you come here, give us ten dollars. We check off a box, and when you hit ten times, you hit annual payment. So pay as you go until you hit a hundred, or you can pay a hundred in one shot. So same in Fairberry, they got the same thing. Marysville does not allow you to sell on public roadways. It has to be... You know what I mean? They don't want that unless there's going to be an event, as such as a fair, a car show, something put on by the city. You know, that you would be invited to be...
Jeremy, put on by the city, or sanctioned by the city?
Sanctioned by the body of, like, you know, what do you guys got here? What do you call yourself?
Homestead Days or whatever.
Well, let's...
Chamber Commerce.
Chamber Commerce or Main Street?
Main Street, there you go.
Okay.
So if that's something, you know, that you... Yeah. Then you can go under their umbrella, because they're the responsible party.
Yeah.
They're not putting, you know... They just put an X to it. But if you're on private property, like I go to Napa, and they... I don't even have to pay the ten-dollar fee if I didn't want to, but I pay it anyway, because you're not impeding the city. You know, so that's their little legal deals, but they don't touch me as far as logistics of anything. As long as I can prove to the state of that state that I'm approved in this state, good enough. State people are state people, I mean. But Fairberry is a little less lenient, you know? They didn't have a background check, and I can park literally at the square, right in front of K-U-T-T. As long as there's an open spot that's free parking, and there's not a time sign on it, have at it. You know? Food trucks are definitely the most respectable people. You know, we know what we're doing, we're coming in. Maybe we step on toes a little bit, but it's going to be a good thing. To where you guys say about fifty foot, or a hundred foot, or three inches away, it's free enterprise. Sorry, there's competition. But does O'Reilly's and Autozone, do they have a regulation on where they... How far they're apart? How many blocks? No. So you can't... You know what I mean? Free enterprise. I'm just saying. Anyway, to be like Mr. Tim, I'm just getting started.
I was going to ask you a question. How many different towns do you think that you've went to with your truck?
You know, four. Four.
Four, okay.
I don't know, IndyCot counts as anything.
It's a community.
Maybe two people in the town.
Yeah.
Is that it? That was your question?
No, just for something later, it isn't a question.
Okay. So anyway, yeah, I mean, basically, yeah, I came to you today. You're always in a meeting when I call or whatever. And I thought we... Ted mentioned that I'd probably be a good information highway for you guys. And, you know, it's a two-way street. Usually, you know? And I'm available quite a bit. Well, like, let's see. So to go to that million-dollar policy, of course Wendy has it, I have it, but there's definitely smaller entities that can't... You know, that's their bottom line. Something like that's not going to be available. And then you have a waiver... You have a waiver on top of it. What's the waiver? Isn't it... Do we get a policy and then waiver, or can we just waiver? I don't... I don't know what you guys are asking out of that. It's an either or for smaller businesses. And is this all containing to just city roadways, you know, parks outside of your events? Or is this on private property, all this stuff? Like my drive-through. You guys took that away from me because I couldn't comply with a city or a state plan, you know? I've got a lot of things that you guys asked of me, and I never got one inch of what I needed. I don't know why that is. You're making it real tough for things to move forward in this town, and trucks are coming. Whether you guys go with it, or go against it, or whatever we're doing here, but, you know, it's a thing. Yeah, a lot of my stuff is about the city. If it's city property that we're talking about here, or private. So fifty foot away from KFC, that food truck's still on the corner of Monroe and Sixth with a Megatron. At night, it's pretty bright. I don't know if anybody go by it ever. Pretty bright. I like to look at notches. Might be a distraction. But I had to move my truck seven foot to the west because I didn't comply. But I can't see around that truck. Huh?
Wrong state right-of-way.
Right. But I can't look down the street and see if somebody's walking or something, you know? There's all kinds of things. Overnight stays, an individual has to be present with his vehicle or machinery at all times. So if I'm on private property, I got to sleep there? Just a thought. Accessible noise, I think Jim said something about that. You know, because I thought we had a noise ordinance that already dealt with that. Till ten o'clock? I think that's covered. Map, a map would be handy, so we know where we can look for locations, just like Marysville's got squirrel maps, because maybe you want to go visit all the squirrels. I'm not against peas. I'm not against any of this. Just got to think about, yeah, either, like Jim, either all or none. Free enterprise, private property. If you don't like where somebody got property, or how he got that property, and that's your concern, is how did you get the contract? Why are you there? It's a free world. Don't make it hard on the rest of them. Any questions?
I just wanted to know, in the four towns that you visited between, what, Beatrice, Marysville, IndyCot, and Fairberry, is that what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have to provide the other three towns a traffic flow layout?
No, because I was on private property. Actually, Marysville, I stepped on Mrs. Landall's toes, not knowing, because I'm trying to be cordial. And the city council happened to be getting food there, the guy. And he took me right down to the information building and set up right down there, where I'm not supposed to set up on the street right away. And because they want the new stuff, they just let that, you know, let that be. The next time I went there, they showed me the ordinance that says we can't serve on right-of-way of city property. And so Napa accepted me. I think you need a hot pass. I think you need a quick pass. You have somebody fill out their information, you call a bling, or whoever, you know, get... Do a background check. Every time you get pulled over, they want to know if you got warrants or warrants. That should be acceptable for a day pass. I mean, if they're looking... If you're looking for something to be a hot pass, and then an annual pass where you guys dig a little deeper, perfect. But I think you need a quick way in and out.
How long does it take to do a background check? I don't know.
I don't know for sure.
Warrants doesn't take very long. That's a radio...
I mean, that's honestly my only concern, for somebody that's not wanting to run or not trying to sell us food.
But he can't do that.
No.
Law enforcement can do that.
Right. They...
Yeah.
For background.
Right. Right, right, yeah. Yeah.
That's a legit fee.
Yeah. I wouldn't even consider that. I think that's a nice, good suggestion on your part, I guess. Yeah.
Questions? Comments? Thanks, Jeremy. Not done yet, huh, Wendy?
No, I'm not. The... I was asking before he actually brought it up, the flow for traffic or whatever. Is there any other business inside Beatrice that has to submit a flow of traffic?
Yes.
What business?
Anytime you have a business come in, whether it's a gas station, restaurant, any of those, they have to lay out their traffic flow, how they expect traffic to move around internally, and as well as access the property from off-streets.
So if the business that we're, like, located at already has a flow of traffic, then why would we have to fill out a flow of traffic?
I think that's one of the questions that we need to get some guidance on tonight, is if, obviously, if we take out private property, then if you go park in somebody's parking lot and you mess up their traffic flow, does the council care? Obviously, that business will, but does the city care? Versus if you're on city property someplace, obviously, that's a different issue. And so I think that's something we just need some guidance on tonight, is public property or private property, in or out, how they want to move forward with that particular question.
Wendy, do you understand why they ask for that? Why we ask for that?
Well, for public safety, but I... I'm having a hard time with if it's already in place, why we're having to double it. So like, for example...
No, I understand what you're saying. I get what you're asking. I just wondered if you knew why we ask, why we collectively ask...
Safety reasons.
Yes, yeah, it's a little more than that, but yeah.
Yeah.
Is there enough... Do they provide enough parking? Do they, you know, is it off, you know, does it... Is it going to cause a problem? Does, so...
Yeah.
Because everything's kind of a ripple effect, you know, which, and that's part of the discussion with this. When you guys set up someplace, it causes ripple effect. So, you know, it affects the businesses and the people that live there adjacent, and so... And that's what we have... That's what we're looking at.
Yep. And then I'll... Jeremy brought up a thing about, like, doing background checks. I don't really particularly care if you guys do a background check. I'm just not certain that it's the fair and right thing to do, because I know quite a few felons that work at restaurants here in town. I mean, and so when you start opening up that door, then who else are you going to do background checks on, you know, and regulate their business? And do that sort of thing? So I just wanted to say that and let you guys know my thoughts on it.
Thanks, Wendy. Gary?
One last thing. We've all watched the city and state and county and everybody create laws and ordinances to problem... We're trying to find a solution to a problem that don't exist, and I think this, without any more information, that's just exactly what we're doing, unless we can come up with something... I don't know why we would want to, if the bigger counties do it and nobody else does it, and nobody's gotten sick that we know of, I just... I just think we're barking up the wrong tree for now.
Anybody else? Here, or Bob?
I do think the major issue is probably going to be, are we talking public property or private property? Because there is some liability if it's parked on the city. But if it's on the private property, it really is the property owners, or the relationship between the food truck and that person, or the property owner. So I can see that as kind of one of the biggest issues. You know, I think, to me, having other food options is a good thing. I'm not sure, you know, whether it's a hundred dollars or fifty dollars, it's kind of like nickel and dime. I didn't realize that the state licensed the food trucks, which puts a different light on it as well. And so I think... I think this has been a good discussion. I thank everybody for coming to have that discussion, because I learned a lot of things here, too. So, you know, I think, to me, that's the big issue there, is private property versus public property. And again, I don't think we've seen a big issue.
I don't really have an issue with any kind of a fee. I don't think we... I don't think we need to charge a fee, unless we want to have documented where that food truck is at any specific period of time. Now, if it's on private property, don't care. If it's on city property, different story.
Right.
What's a million-dollar... What... Just a minute, Wendy. What's a million-dollar policy cost?
I... Overall, because we have a farm and our...
Well, no, just for your business.
We just have a million-dollar umbrella over it all, and it's probably six hundred dollars for the year, maybe.
Jeremy, do you have it just on your food truck?
Yeah, I'm different. I have a fire side, do a guaranteed policy.
This is a little bit more expensive than just having a liability.
I can tell you that when we asked around, we got an estimate that these million-dollar insurance policies cost between three and five hundred dollars a year.
Okay, all right. What's that?
Do you do like a daily? Because if they're going to do one, be here one day?
Because other... So, for example, what...
Build a policy for one day?
I don't think so.
Yeah, for example, if they're coming in to Beatrice, not any other city requires you to have this million-dollar thing with a separate certificate is the problem. So the people that are going to be coming in for one day, one week, rip best, whatever else is going on, they're going to have to buy a policy just in effect for either that one day or that one week with the city of Beatrice listed as...
I personally carry a visa form and my insurance policy with me wherever I go. So either they can waiver and... We try to make people come here and do what we do.
Sure. Thanks.
I was going to ask a question. So are you guys talking about separating it from public and private property?
We're just talking, Wendy. We're just talking. Okay? Mr. Belding?
I wasn't sure if I was going to come up here and talk or not tonight, but I think I might have a few things just to add since we're on the topic, so. Name, Brian Belding. Address, 7558 South Thirty-second, Lake in Nebraska, 68516. But I do... I am a partner and director of operations at Stone Hollow Brewing Company at 301 Court Street. Most of you know, I'm sitting here in a little bit of capacity than what these guys are. I don't own a food truck or have any interest in a food truck, other than we do partner with a lot of food trucks at the brewery. People like new things, they like trying new food, and we've found that, you know, that's helped the brewery, not only the brewery, but the other tenants in the mercantile building as well. We've found a direct correlation between when we do have food trucks, business is better for all businesses, and they tell you the same thing. But why I'm up here, what I want to talk about real quick is, before we're getting off on private property versus public, is that the food trucks that we have, and we've talked, it's been really informal conversations with them, but I've talked to them, and the ones that we have usually come in maybe five times a year. And so we're looking at a food truck coming in for four hours once every two months. And the kind... With that being said, the kind of application that they'd be filling out would be the temporary one. And just looking at the timelines of that temporary application, from the time they need to submit all this paperwork, including the insurance, which does mention Beatrice specifically, which would require them to talk to their insurance, you know, provider to get that in short notice. By the time they submit that, they have six days to serve the food. And it might take one to two days to actually approve the application. So I don't know that that's enough time, you know? Say, say they apply on a Monday, for example. They get approval by Wednesday. And then whether or not they get approval by Wednesday, they had to have that food ordered probably a week or two in advance just to make sure that they have enough for our, whatever the occasion is. Some food trucks, you know, even though they're barbecue food truck, might be doing like a Cajun themed something for a party. So I just think the timeline on those temporary permits needs to be increased or give them longer to apply with a certain date. I don't know. It's just, I've talked to probably about seventy percent of the ones that we've talked with, the food trucks had said that they were not likely to come to the brewery any longer if they're going to require these continual approvals. The annual might be a little bit different. They might, if they're, you know, if we can promise them, yeah, we'll bring in for twelve, twelve times in a year or something like that, it might be worth them to do the annual. But a lot of these, like I said, are kind of one offs. So we get a truck every two to three months. They're not going to want to keep going through this process over and over and over again. And it's not the money that's tied to it. I think it's just the burden of time. It would be nice if, you know, the process could be simpler. Um, or if we could just provide them with documentation saying, this is what the city of Beatrice requires you to have. Um, and then if a police officer of any sort or any kind of law enforcement wouldn't want to come check, great, they'd already have the liability form signed. Um, if there's anything, I guess, Stone Hollow could do to prepare these food vendors for the process to make it easier, I think that would help. Because as of right now, I think we're going to lose a large majority of the trucks coming in from out of town, for sure.
So Brian, when they looked at the, when you provided them, see, I really wish they were going to swear you in because I had some things I was going to ask you.
Good, good.
About food truck?
No, I've known Brian a long time.
I know you have.
When you, when you had this discussion with the people that are bringing the trucks in, did they go, ah? Because, or, or did they say, ah, we've got some hurdles that we've had to overcome in some of the other communities? I mean, because we're trying to pair it, in the discussion part of this, we're trying to pair it so we're similar to the communities that we're in competition with. I mean, every, you know, we compete with every other, you know, city for their, for everybody else's dollars and things. But I, I mean, did they, I, I, I lean more towards the annual application because it does simplify it. We had that conversation as well. Then you could just come to, you know, contact clerk's office, you know, via, you know, email or fax or whatever it is and say, you know, we're going to be here in these, in this window. I, I just wondered.
Yes, um, well, I mean, a lot of them brought up the fact that the reason they like to come to Beatrice is because there is no process like that.
Okay.
They avoid going to places like Lincoln and Omaha, places that have those restrictions. And Lincoln and Omaha can get by with it because they have thirty food trucks within those communities and plenty of variety to be able to, you know, Beatrice, we have a couple of great ones, but, but that's it. So if I'm looking at bringing anybody in from the outside, they don't want to go through this burden just for, you know, just for four hours of serving food. And like, you know, like they mentioned also, there's, I don't know that there's a lot of money in the food truck business. I mean, people could come here. They might one time serve, you know, five ti- five hundred to a thousand dollars worth of food in that single day. The next time, they might come and they might serve three hundred dollars worth and they've already spent four hundred dollars in product. So they've, they're losing money in that case.
Yeah, the margins are tight.
And, and with that also being said, another, another issue I see is, and it's just happened within the last month, we've had three food trucks have to back out from actually coming here, coming to the brewery because most of them are one and two man operations. And if one person's sick, they can't come. If the food that they ordered doesn't get there in time, they can't come. If there's mechanical issues, they can't come. Um, so they'd already be applying and they'd lose, you know, if they can't come, they'd be losing that money. It's non-transferable. So we wouldn't have time to bring somebody else in to take their place because they'd need at least that six days or so, you know, to apply and to get approved. So those are the little hurdles that I see preventing food trucks from coming here.
Hey, Brian, what is, what is the hurdle that you see with applying, uh, as an applicant, supplying your business name, address, a phone number and, and email address, vehicle license plate number, general food that will be sold and a state tax ID number? What's, what's so burdensome about that?
Well, I mean, I suppose I'd have, you know, we'd have to look at forms and see how it is. The way I read it, it seemed like there's a lot more to it than that.
Page four.
Let's see. Well, I don't know if I have, yeah, there we go. I think I'm, I don't know if I have the update. I guess what I was looking at, um, don't they also have to have like a traffic flow plan approved by, or at least looked at by a city engineer?
That is in here, you're right.
Okay, so there's that in addition to, and they probably have all that paperwork, but I guess would it be so arduous just to say that they have it with them and that at any point in time, somebody can check on it? You know, a police officer can stop and say, hey, I need to see all this information that's outlined right here? I, I don't know that that would be any different. They, like, you know, they've all been, already went through the state processing, so they're already approved that way. I just don't know why that we, we have to have a, we have to do it again. I, I don't understand the reason behind that.
Okay. Well, hopefully we don't get to this, Brian. But, uh, first of all, you guys do a great job down there bringing in a variety of the trucks. Appreciate that. Uh, wasn't picking on trivia nights by any means. I was just bringing that out that you shouldn't have to because I consider that a special event. So you'd be exempt in my eyes. However, Stan mentioned the hurdles. There's, there's sixteen different hurdles over here with all the paperwork you got to supply. Uh, not bad. They get the, some of the, some of the oddball stuff, which I agree with, would be a little bit of a hurdle, but the generic stuff's easy. But again, hopefully we don't get to the point where we're, we're looking at permit fees. But as a, as a business owner and you're bringing in, let's say twenty-five different food trucks in 2022. So let's say for, um, for Wendy or Jeremy, it's a hundred dollars a year, ten dollars a day until, similar to like what he said about Marysville. But where you're a, a static facility and we said, all right, Brian, it's going to be, you can bring in whatever food trucks you want, and it's two hundred dollars a year. And you, they don't have to go through all that. You've permitted them.
Absolutely. I actually, as a matter of fact, um, I had an informal conversation with a couple of you and I brought that up as a possibility if it would be, you know, if we already have the approval to have the trucks on the city right away, um, you know, by the council. If the brewery itself could take that ownership of being able to make sure that they have all their paperwork, us paying the fee and then just letting them park there. I, I think that would be a great, we'd definitely do that if that was not.
For the record, you and I never discussed that.
No, no, that's true.
For the record, who brought this up in the first place? Did one of us? I don't know that I, I didn't. Where'd this come from to start with? What person brought this forward?
Came from city administration, looking for, obviously, we have more of these coming in. We're looking for how it is. We need to handle these moving forward. We've mentioned the, the green truck. There's that fourth in Ella. Again, trying to find ways, um, to handle those. As we talked about before, we know if McDonald's shows up, how we, how our zoning rules apply, how all the other rules apply. We don't have those to apply to mobile food trucks. And so that's where it came from is how do you handle these as they start to proliferate in this community?
So next month, I will bring in a box trailers, Gary. Okay?
Brian, Brian, how many of the food trucks that you have in go places that have no ordinances at all?
How many of them that we have in?
Yeah, do you have any idea?
The majority of them, I think. Well, I mean, except we do get a lot of trucks from Lincoln, um, a few from Omaha Council Bluffs area, and they have ordinances within their communities. So, you know, take a food truck in Lincoln, for example. Their primary business is all done within Lincoln and they might pay that four hundred dollar annual fee is what. The one, one of my talked to today mentioned it was four hundred bucks. I don't know that for sure. Pays an annual fee, but they go all around Lincoln. So they're, you know, at different tap houses, at different businesses around Lincoln. And then they'll come to Beatrice because there's no additional fee. Now, if I were to tell one of these trucks, oh, by the way, you have to pay an additional hundred dollars plus provide us with all this information, I doubt they would. I had a couple that said it depends on how much it is and how time consuming it is. So I'm positive we can still get maybe a few food trucks, but it's not going to be like what we get today.
So from what I understand, Marysville and Fairberry has an ordinance also then? Pedlar?
Very, very, very.
You could fit it on two pages, not twelve.
And I could attest that a lot of those food trucks go eight miles outside of Lincoln city limits to Hickman, Lake Hotel, capital rewiring.
Zoning.
Eight miles outside of Lincoln.
You guys want to do?
A question. How many, other than Stone Hollows, how many of these food trucks are not on private property? Or, because most of them I see are on private property other than you guys, which are, is, is along the city streets. So.
And we do also, and we apply, I mean.
We apply, yeah, because we see them come through. And we can't really regulate what goes on, on private property. Am I correct? I mean.
Well, as long as it's zoned properly.
Yeah. But most of these trucks that I've seen has been on private property where they're, they're zoned. Like I said, other than, other than Stone Hollows, I, I.
Stan, you asked the question of what, what do we want to do? This is just my opinion and there's eight or nine of us up here. They're already regulated from the state. This is twelve pages of micromanagement, in my opinion. Uh, we're, we're trying to better the community. We're trying to bring in different things. We're trying to help other businesses that are static locations such as Stone Hollow. And now we're looking at, if I went through all this with all the stuff and paperwork, they got, that's probably another thousand dollars that you heard Wendy say that they don't hardly make anything anyway. I've worked with a caterer here in Beatrice that does a lot of chickens at, at an event or two. They don't make any money. It's just a, a, uh, service they're basically providing. It's, it's of my opinion, uh, that the only thing that I get concerned about is, uh, and it's similar to the way Marysville works with a twenty-five dollar background check, that the paperwork can be filled out with the, the city clerk. That gets ran up to the police station. They do their thing. In the meantime, city clerk says, all right, you, you have a temporary permit. And then, and then do something along the lines of total a hundred bucks if you're here, ten different visits, ten dollars. And we provide a map of where we can park at in the city, legally, without violating any road, any, you know, because we're all smart enough to know that the traffic flow is not going to be a big deal if we designate where they're going to park. Unless it's some fantastic, uh, restaurant that nobody's ever ate at and they're serving filet mignon for three bucks apiece and ten thousand people are going to show up, there's not going to be that many vehicles there. So we can come up with a, a city map that they can get and boom, and be done with it and not have to go through all this hassle. This is, this is just, like I said, twelve pages of micromanagement, in my opinion. And, you know, we do enough to, to places already and different things, you know? I wasn't kidding, Gary. I mean, there's, what, six thousand households in the city of Nebraska or city of Beatrice? And there's probably five thousand pickup box trailers without license plates. But we're worried about a food truck that's bringing something to us. It's just, uh, ridiculous, in my opinion. And if this is all the better things we got to do, then we're in trouble. We, uh, we don't worry about the habitual criminals that continually come back to our community and put a, put a dent on us. We don't worry about that. We see them in jail all the time. We don't worry about the drugies running around selling drugs to our kids and everything else.
Let's stay on subject.
But we're going to worry about a food truck providing a, a courteous service to us. And, uh, this is, you, you won't get a yes on me for anything that's in here other than a, a background check and a maybe a hundred bucks. That's it.
Question. Maybe to Wendy and Jeremy. When you get your state license, your permit from the state, do they do a background check on you?
Future.
I can't remember if they did on Dad or not. Okay.
They come out and they do like, and I'll have another one. Every year they come out and do your yearly inspections. If they see, see us down at Stone Hollow, they can stop there at any time, anytime. They can have your food trailer.